This is the Portland City Council. And before we begin the formal part of our proceedings, we have a question that we ask both the audience here and the audience at home who are watching this on cable television. And the question is this: How are the children? And the reason we ask that question is because we believe that when our children are well, and they're taken care of, when they're well-educated, they have a roof over their heads, that the rest of the community is successful as well. And so what we do is we have experts come in and talk to us about the state of the children. And this morning, we have two young people from Southeast Works, Bobby Arrington and Melissa Gonzalez. Could you please come forward? Bobby is a recent graduate of Southeast Works program and currently attends PCC part-time. Melissa just graduated the program at Southeast Works. So Bobby, why don't you go ahead?
My name is Robert Arrington, and I'm here on behalf of Southeast Works. Southeast Works is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the education of the youth. I live in a neighborhood full of children affected by meth use and other drugs. Everywhere I look, it seems like there's an attic walking down the road with their children. I used to be one of those children, and let me tell you from personal experience, it's not fun watching your parents on a downward spiral. I dropped out of school in the 10th grade because I needed work to take care of bills and a pregnant girlfriend. Things that never would have happened if it wasn't for what I call the most ignorant drug ever, crystal meth. But no one wanted to hire me because I wasn't in school. Then something great happened: I found Southeast Works. Kenny Sparks pushed me to join the GED class. This was about a year after I dropped out. My girlfriend hadn't had an abortion, and I was no longer living with my mom. I passed my GED with an average of 580, barely missing honors. I start college for summer terms soon, something no one in my family ever thought that I would do, just like the city commissioner Randy Leonard said about his family when he came to Southeast Works as a career speaker. Southeast Works is a very successful school. In the year 2005, Southeast Works graduated 17 students from the GED class, and in 2006, 50 students. So obviously, you can see how much Southeast Works has grown. There is only one thing I can think of that would make Southeast Works even more successful: funding. In the year 2005, Southeast Works had $300,000 in funding for 17 graduates, and this year in 2006, $250,000 for 50, which is almost three times as many kids. That doesn't make any sense. To finish off, I would just like to say, Southeast Works is the greatest thing that's ever happened to me. I don't think of myself as the trouble of youth anymore. I've taken control of my life, and no one could say differently.
Thank you, Robert. Melissa?
Hi. Good morning. My name is Melissa Gonzalez, and as you know, I am here to speak with you about our city, Portland, and my opinions and views. I've lived in the Portland metro area my entire life. I dropped out of public school at the end of my freshman year. After that, I attended Mount Scott Learning Center. In January of this year, I found out I was pregnant. It was very apparent to me that I needed an education to be able to provide for myself and my unborn child. I now have my GED and work as an intern at Southeast Works at the front desk as the receptionist. Despite how far I've come, my overall experience in the Portland Public School District has been a real struggle. Throughout my years in PPS, I found my grades slowly slipping. Starting the year off strong with As and Bs and barely finishing off the years with Cs, Ds, and some Fs was putting a huge damper on my education and my home life. Towards the end of my freshman year, I had gone to my school counselor and asked her what I could do because I was failing some of my classes, and she basically said, unfortunately, you're not failing bad enough for me to help you. And something with that really struck me as wrong, that a student could be reaching out for help and not get it because my counselor had 560-some freshmen also to attend to. I found school to be uneventful, and it failed to draw my attention. As I got into the last few months of my eighth-grade year, I found myself cutting school at least once a week. As I became a freshman, I skipped at least four periods daily. After I was ready to drop out of Franklin High School, a counselor mentioned to me that I might have ADD. I was tested, and sure enough, I have a small case of Attention Deficit Disorder. It seemed strange to me that in the nine years I was in the school district, it was not once mentioned to me that this might be a possibility. Despite the common assumption, most people with ADD are very intelligent, so I learned things very quickly. And spent most of my class time sitting and not being engaged to go beyond the norm. If you sit in on a class, you'll notice that teachers will teach to the speed of the majority of the class, so if you are behind, you will be asked to stay after to get extra help, or will be assigned a tutor to aid you if you are struggling. But what is being done about those who complete their tasks and are ahead? Nothing. Nothing at all is being done. So individuals such as myself are left unchallenged and uninterested. As many students are currently falling through the cracks of our education system, being unchallenged is just as important as being behind. I feel that if we were able to take some funding and use that to tap into programs such as Southeast Works, or even make teachers more aware of some programs out there, or after-school programs that have tutors for people who aren't necessarily behind but want to exceed and excel, I think that that would help us not let our children fall off the face of the public school system, and it would keep kids off the streets and back where they belong, in a classroom. So I'm asking you to think about the kids you see riding their bikes home from school. Think of the children playing on the playgrounds, the kids on the school buses, and remember, every time that you see them, that they are this country's future. They are your future. Don't lose tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, Melissa. I really appreciated your words. Thank you. You did a good job. Let's give them a hand, folks. City Council will come to order. Carla, please call the roll.
Adams?
Here.
Leonard?
Here.
Saltzman?
Here.
Stan?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Communications, please read the first item.
Item 773, Request of Bruce Broussard to address council regarding Portland Public Schools and the Budget.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. How are we doing today? As you know, today is Flag Day, and I've got symbols here. I've got my tie here, and we really should expose ourselves in regards to the flag. The flag is very, very important. It's what this country is all about. Now, as part of that, Saturday, this weekend for that matter, that's Juneteenth. Juneteenth, I understand, the mayor, you're going to be representing the city Friday night with a proclamation acknowledging Juneteenth. And throughout the country, people are going to be celebrating Juneteenth. I've given you a handout that sort of gives you a little background of what Juneteenth is all about, and how the African-Americans actually participated in that piece. I'll actually read one proclamation that's going to be all over the place, but this is the 140th year of the Juneteenth celebration. Clara People, our own Portland person, brought Juneteenth here to Portland, Oregon, and she's going to be featured in a parade that the Buffalo Soldiers is going to be leading with a couple horses and all kinds of folks and whatever. We're going to be very involved, and I know you're involved in some other parades, but if you've got any one of the other Commissioners that you'd like to assign to the parade on Saturday, I'd be more than glad, and I'd give them one of the Buffalo Soldiers' hats, if you will, to wear in the parade. Let me read this proclamation real quick, like to you, give the audience a feel of what Juneteenth's all about. Major General Gordon Granger led Union Soldiers into Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865, bringing the news that the Civil War had ended and that the Emancipation Proclamation, signed over two years earlier, had declared all slaves to be free persons. This historic day is celebrated to remember the end of slavery. Emancipation demonstrated our country's belief in liberty and equality for every citizen and was a profound recognition that each and every American has rights, dignity, and matches value. 140 years later, the Juneteenth observance continues to remind us of our country's founding principles of liberty and justice for all. As we mark the anniversary of the end of servitude, we also recognize the many contributions of African-Americans to our culture. African-Americans have helped shape our country's character, enhance the diversity that makes America strong, and contributed to the vitality, success, and prosperity of our nation. Juneteenth is a day that stands for the dignity and equality of all citizens, regardless of race, so that all may share the blessings of freedom that America provides. George W. Bush, President of the United States. And again, like I said, this is not political. It's a respect, if you will. He happens to be the President of the United States, but the fact of the matter is, we should all recognize the fact that this day is not just an African-American day. It's Americans who happen to be African-Americans who are celebrating the fact that this country does exist, and we're very proud to stand under these United States and the American flag. Thank you very much.
774, Request of Russ Holcomb to address council regarding special inspection.
Please read the next item.
775, Request of Janet Denton to address council regarding terrorizing of private citizens.
Thank you for being here this morning. When you speak, would you please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm Janet Denton. And Saturday, May the 20th, I was downtown Portland, and it doesn't matter if I choose to go to the library, a flower shop, or a jewelry store, to Nordstrom's or Fruceland. It is my right, as freedom, as a citizen of the United States of America. These rights were taken away from me that Saturday afternoon by a group of young adults that I will call by definition nothing less than terrorists. Terrorists, those who use terror and fear tactics to manipulate the people to get their point across. The law clearly states that we all have the right of freedom of speech, but in a peaceful and orderly manner. As I was leaving the store, more than a half dozen of these terrorists surrounded me and were yelling and cursing all kinds of garbage. I was trying to get away from them, but they followed me, a whole city block. There was no getting away from them, and I was being tormented, harassed, and scared. The laws are very clear and understandable, and I believe that you are more than familiar with the codes of disorderly conduct: menacing, stalking, and harassment. Harassments which includes words and gestures of a manner intended and likely to provoke violent response. Finally, as I turned around to face my attackers and ready to defend myself, I pulled my cell phone out to call the police for help, but due to their continued loud torments, I could not hear what was being said on the phone. So I ran back to the only safe haven, and that's inside the store. "I'm calling the police," I said. "You don't have to," they said. "They're right across the street," said the young man from the counter. My fear turned to anger. How could these police officers stand there and let this happen? I dashed out across the street to confront the police, but the terrorists continued to torment and stalk me. The police said politely that they could do nothing, and that the terrorists were in the law, and they could do nothing, that these people were doing nothing illegal. Excuse me, I'm a blonde, but I'm not stupid. A group of three young mothers with their babies and toddlers like me were engulfed with these terrorists with their continued profanities and garbage gestures. The moms were white, with their faces with fear and confusion, but the police did nothing. How are your children? This scene must have spoken very clearly to the mothers and all those that are around. Don't count on the police to come to your aid because they have been instructed by their superiors not to do anything. Guess whose signs their paycheck? I, in trying to diffuse the situation, another police officer even asked me, "Well, why don't you do your shopping on another day of the week?" Okay, let's all stay home from downtown on Saturdays and go to the malls instead. The irregularities don't stop there. I put in a report to the DA. I learned that basically the DA felt that because I had a way out, my complaint was not valid. The DA is now more like a Monday-morning quarterback. But where was he on that Saturday afternoon? Hey, he could have told me that in the midst of all my fear and torment and harassment that I had a way out. The laws were broken, and my rights were taken away. The U.S. is one of the most wonderful places in the world to live and to work in because we live by laws that preserve and protect everyone's freedoms, not just the few. Not to be ignored, nor reinvented, nor interpreted to fit personal agendas for those who aren't authority. The police and the government are to serve and to protect the people, not to be used for personal gain and agendas. I also, to let you know that I'm not the only one, Mayor, you also have a letter from Mike Harvey from Moses Lake Industries. And in it, he is basically saying that when he visited the city last weekend for pleasure and to look for a possible new office location, that they were accosted by these terrorists outside the store, and these people used profanity on them, and they cursed at his wife and other, you know, things like that. He also approached the police. The police also said the same thing.
Ms. Denton?
Yes, sir.
Are I giving you an extra two minutes and 40 seconds?
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. But Mayor, I really hope that you would take my experience. I'm not the only one. This is not about a store. This is about private citizens and their rights to freely and safely walk up and down the streets and go to and from where they choose. These rights are being taken away from us by this group, which are abusing the Freedom of Speech law. And I thank you all very much for your time.
Would you please give your notes to the clerk? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please read the next item.
776, Request of Brian Willis to address council regarding domestic human trafficking.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Brian Willis. I'm the health advisor for EPPAT USA. This is the U.S. chapter of an international, non-government organization that combats trafficking in children. Trafficking is a global phenomenon. More than 1 million people are trafficked globally per year. While much attention is focused on the global aspect of trafficking, EPPAT USA estimates that a quarter of a million American children are trafficked throughout the United States every year. Trafficking creates significant, serious health problems for all the victims, including infections with HIV and STIs, unplanned pregnancy, substance abuse, mental health problems, violence, including rape and murder, which we have all seen in this city. We have heard the expression, "Think global, act local." A first step in addressing trafficking in Portland is to declare our opposition to it in all its forms. I propose Portland adopt a resolution that we are opposed to all forms of trafficking in both foreign and domestic victims. EPPAT USA is unaware of any other city in the United States that has taken such a step. We should show our leadership, both in the city and the country, by adopting this resolution. I hope that every member of the council will support this resolution to oppose all forms of trafficking of persons in Portland. Background materials for this proposal and resolution will be left with the clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
777, Request of Richard Alkanic to address council regarding resolving differences with the city.
Good morning, Portland City Council Mayor. My name is Richard Koenig. I want to thank the mayor for the two minutes and 40 seconds granted to important items. Today, I've got two brief agenda items. On June 1st, my contribution to the celebratory moment was that I shared a letter from Chief Deputy Attorney General Peter Shepherd, in which he specifically supported City Attorney David Warburrough's landmark research on how the city of Portland doesn't have the authority or can't find it to issue traffic tickets to the public. Mr. Shepherd's letter said that he could not order the Oregon State Police to provide a law that says everybody has to have a driver's license because the legislature hasn't created it. I had just received the letter from Mr. Shepherd, and not having had time to make a copy for each of you, I promised to get it to you. Last week, I dropped off Mr. Shepherd's package. It included my demand for the law that says everybody has to have a driver's license. Also included was an assessment to the effect that if the law has not been created, then the Oregon State Police have been perpetrating the same crime against the people that the Portland Police Bureau have been. I hope that you've enjoyed the read by now, although I hear that it may not have gotten to you. As for settling my claim against the city for inadequate police hiring and training policies, I've got an update. You will remember that I was arrested without cause by Officers Greaves, Madden, and Woodward. Not totally without cause, I suppose, as I had called the police for support in serving subpoenas on the Attorney General's office, and when they came, they arrested me, and that did put a crimp in my action. Then Officers Dahlberg and Sergeant Bailey of the Northeast Precinct went to the District Attorney's Office to try to get a warrant for my arrest for attempting to give them a police report about my false arrest. Tom, I hope that you'll remember that I gave you a copy of the crime report, and I said, "Why don't you set a good example for the Portland Police Bureau by forwarding this through channels to the DA's office?" Well, I'm going to have to add a claim for my injury incurred subsequently because I found that you had not set a good example, and when I went to deliver the crime report, I was arrested over there at the courthouse for some as-yet-to-be undisclosed reason. Now, if I find out that you had a hand in setting me up for that arrest, that'll probably be a crime, and I might have to get restitution from you directly. But if it was a mere oversight or neglect to set a good example for the Police Bureau, well, then it'll come out of the city account, and I'll keep you posted on that. Thank you, gentlemen.
That's for Communications.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to pull from the Consent Agenda, item 787, to put on the regular agenda. It was put on Consent by mistake. Do any of the Commissioners wish to pull any items from the Consent Agenda?
Brian here.
Brian?
This is Brian from my staffer. I need to pull 791 and direct it back to my office.
I understand the neighborhood was going to pull that agenda. They may have... Do you still want to pull it?
Yep, I still do. Thanks for checking, though.
Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to pull any item from the Consent Agenda?
I'd like to pull 78 through 784 for free comment.
Carla, please call the roll.
Adams?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Stan?
Aye.
Potter?
Please read the 930 Times, sir.
Item 778, Impose temporary surcharge on business license fees to provide funding assistance to public school districts in the city.
Today, our community will move one step closer to keeping the promise we've made to our children to provide them with a quality education. A coalition of business, community, and political leaders have been working together to secure funding for our schools since last fall. To secure that future, the council is voting on a funding plan that calls for continued investment in education from our community partners. This one-year funding plan includes $10 million from the city's general fund, on top of an approximately $12 million currently spent on such programs as the school police and the SUN schools. Our schools also need support from our business community to maintain a full school year, reasonable class sizes, and best practices targeted at raising achievement levels. Businesspeople know better than anyone that our educated workforce is the foundation of our economy and our future. The recent Oregon Business Summit and a poll by the Portland Business Alliance both named education as their number-one priority. The council, therefore, will be reinstating the business license fee surcharge for the 2006 and 2007. The surcharge rate will be approximately 0.3% for the 2006 year, and in order to generate $6 million for the school districts, the rate will then be adjusted for the second year and final year to generate a total of $9 million over the two years the surcharge will be in place. As the legislature funds our schools at a substantial level this season, if they fund it, then the surcharge will be reduced or eliminated in its second year. I'd like to call up some people to testify on this. I'd like to ask Sandra McDonough, President of the Portland Business Association, Bob McKean, Superintendent of Centennial School District, Barbara Rommel, Superintendent of the David Douglas School District, Katie Larson, Chair of the Park Rose School Board, and Bobby Reagan, Chair of the School Board, Portland Public Schools. We'll call them up three at a time, and then, as those three testify, we'll ask the others to come up. Thank you all for being here, and I appreciate you coming in to testify on this matter. Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the councils. Good morning. My name is Sandra McDonough, and I am President of the Portland Business Alliance. Our members include about 1,300 small and large businesses in the Portland metro area. I'm here today to support the school funding package before you, including the two-year continuation of the temporary business license fee surcharge. As you know, for the past four years, local businesses have agreed to pay extra taxes for our schools. We have done this because, as the mayor said, education and workforce development is our top priority, and frankly, we've done it because most businesspeople are also parents, and they have seen what the continuing budget constraints have done to our schools. The process we went through last fall and winter to fashion a school funding solution was long, and it was not always easy. I particularly want to thank Mayor Potter for keeping all of us at the table even when the talks got tough. This temporary funding solution is possible only because a number of parties came to that table under the leadership of my board member, Sho DeZono. We had parents, teachers, school administrators, union representatives, businesspeople, and government leaders there. Ultimately, the solution reflects that partnership with funding from the city, the county, and the business community. Also important was the commitment by Portland Public Schools to reduce their costs so that the budget gap we were filling was not as big as it could have been. My board has agreed to support continuation of the BLF surcharge for up to two additional years for a total of $9 million. That means your Portland businesses will be paying extra taxes for schools for a total of six years and something approaching $40 million. We also are very pleased that city leaders recognize the burden that this local business tax puts on particularly small businesses in our community. Mayor Potter and Commissioner Adams have committed to work with us on long-term BLF relief for those businesses, and we look forward to those discussions. Obviously, we can't continue year after year to come up with short-term fixes for our school districts. We need to continue the partnership we put together for this agreement to advocate for a long-term funding solution and also school district cost structures that are sustainable over the long term. The alliance joined with the city and our school districts during the special legislative session last spring, and we successfully advocated for a funding package that benefited all Oregon schools. We know we will continue those discussions when the legislature convenes in January. Also, we are prepared to work with all of our local school leaders on local funding measures. Our board, in fact, has said it will limit its support for tax measures in the fall to only school measures. The one exception they have approved is the funding for the police and fire pension and disability fund changes that you will be considering later today. Again, thank you for your leadership on this important issue, and we encourage your support for this funding package.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Sandy.
Bob?
Yes, I'm Bob McKean, Superintendent of Centennial School District. Mayor Potter, members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My remarks are to provide the context for what passage of the business license fee will mean for Centennial School District and to offer my thanks on behalf of all students who attend schools in Portland. During the past three years, the ITAX and business license fee represented approximately 12% of Multnomah County school districts' budgets. In short, the ITAX allowed the school districts of the city and county to operate at about the national per pupil spending average. This means we were able to offer a reasonable, but by no means lavish, educational set of services to our students. Sadly, other districts in the state have not been so fortunate, and children across the state of Oregon have suffered. The loss of the ITAX, coupled with the potential loss of the business license fee, has been significant for all Portland and Multnomah County school districts. Centennial, for example, was slated to lose $6.1 million of a $53 million budget, again approximately 12%. The immense loss of services that that implied was unacceptable. The program reductions, the class size increases that we were projecting to fill that gap were very significant. Mayor Potter and the city, Mayor Potter and the city council, and this was the dismal picture we faced when you intervened. You recognized that this situation was devastating for students and ultimately the city of Portland. You vowed not to let the children down and not to let the city of Portland down. Mayor Potter, you and your staff worked very hard to develop a regional plan to address the issue that would be acceptable to a broad constituency. When that did not bear fruit, and it was clear that some form of another ITAX was not feasible, you went to work with the city council. The effort that you put forth was instrumental in forging a plan that completed the bridge to the next biennium. Funds from the city budget, coupled with the business license fee and funds from Multnomah County, will allow Centennial, for example, to operate at approximately a service-neutral level for 2006, 2007. Again, this is about at the national average. That means Centennial students will have reasonable class sizes and that they will have appropriate programs. I am deeply grateful to the citizens of Portland for their support for children. I am especially grateful to the business leaders and the businessmen for their support for children through the business license fee. I know it is burdensome, but it is so needed. Mayor Potter, Councilman Adams, Leonard, Saltzman, and Sten, words cannot express my appreciation for you. You have chosen to support children in the future of our city when sadly others could not bring themselves to do so. Your steadfast leadership and willingness to collaborate are models of civic responsibility. I must tell you that it has made me proud to work with you. It has made me proud to be a citizen of, a resident of, the city of Portland. Unfortunately, our work on behalf of children is not complete. We have a state school funding dilemma that remains. The impact of the funding dilemma for 2007, 2009 will be cataclysmic if the state fails to take appropriate action once again. Our attention must be focused on solving this problem at the state level in the coming months, and while that work will not be easy, I look forward to standing with you shoulder to shoulder as we work together for the children and the future of our city and state. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you. Good morning. I am speaking in support of the ordinance today. As Superintendent of David Douglas School District, oh, and for the record, my name's Barbara Rommel. I'm Superintendent at David Douglas School District. I have seen the devastating effects of unstable and less-than-adequate funding for education in the state of Oregon. I want to express appreciation to Mayor Potter and the city commissioners for providing the leadership to buoy up the funding for K-12 public education in the city of Portland. You acted collaboratively, and the plan you developed is equitable and provides a temporary rescue in an effort to create a long-term solution. I would also like to thank the Business Alliance and other business organizations and the city's businesses for their contribution. The regional business plan for 2006 states that globalization requires a much tighter linkage between education and business than ever before. Businesses' cooperation in this funding effort is a major step to allowing that linkage to be strengthened. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and please thank your staff and your teachers for what they do.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Good morning, folks. If you, when you speak, please state your name for the record. Bobby, I want to begin with you.
That's great. Mayor Potter and city commissioners, my name is Bobby Reagan, and I'm co-chair of the Portland School Board. I speak today in support of the city ordinance. Since the passage of Measure 5 15 years ago, Portland Public Schools and school districts across the city, the county, and the state have faced tremendous funding instability. What has kept Portland Public Schools whole and vibrant during these years has been the generous support of local partners, including the city of Portland and our business community. Going into next year, Portland Public Schools faced a $57 million shortfall, the result of a perfect storm of funding cuts coming together at once. Our local levy, capital bond, gap authorization, and DSEG funds all expired at the same time. In this month, the Multnomah County ITAX expires as well. Taken together, this amounts to a loss of about 25% of Portland Public Schools' revenue from September 2004 to September 2006. Later this month, thanks to the Herculean efforts of many of our community partners, the Portland School Board will adopt a budget that preserves teaching positions next year, reasonable class sizes, and a full school year. Some say it takes a village to raise a child. We know it takes much more. I would like to specifically acknowledge Mayor Tom Potter for your visionary and relentless leadership in the school funding battle at the state, regional, county, and city levels, and I want to thank each of you for your unwavering commitment to our kids and our community. I'm also very grateful to the Portland business community, which stepped up in 2003 with $15 million to ensure a full school year for Portland Public Schools and which has paid a city business license fee surcharge for the past several years to support all city schools. The continuation of this surcharge will help all five Portland school districts weather the school funding storm next year. I especially acknowledge Sho DeZono, President of Ozymoto Travel, and Judy Peppler and Sandy McDonough with the Portland Business Alliance, who clearly appreciate the vital role schools play in educating our workforce. On behalf of Superintendent Vicki Phillips and the Portland School Board, I thank you for your dedication to our kids and our community, and I look forward to working with you all during the next legislative session to ensure adequate and stable funding for all of Oregon's children. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Hello. My name is Katie Larcell. I'm the Chair of the Park Rose School Board, and I'm here, too, to thank the Mayor Potter and the city council for your persistent and compassionate leadership in this last year. You're going to help us get through the post-ITAX years, and I want to thank everyone who is contributing. Everyone is sharing in this plan, city taxpayers, county taxpayers, and even Oregon State lottery players. And today, we're here to honor the business community for stepping up also, as they have I hope it makes them feel better that this tax is going to their number-one priority for infrastructure, which is schools. And I hope it also helps to know that the money is making a tremendous difference in my school district, Park Rose. In the '90s, Park Rose was, had to cut consistently, and until the ITAX came in, and then we were able to add 17 teachers, outdoor school, which we'd already had cut, and we really splurged and bought math textbooks and some technology. That has made quite a change in our district. In those three years, we've raised five of our six schools up at least one level on the Oregon Report Card. Two of our four grade schools are rated exceptional, and we've been lobbying that they get a plus system on their great, their report cards. Two are honored by the Department of Ed in the last three years for closing the achievement gap for low-income and minority students. One of these honored schools is a SUN school, and so I just want to make the point that the money is making a difference. Thank you, business community, for stepping up and supporting all of Portland's children.
Thank you very much, Katie. Thank you, Bobby.
You're welcome.
Please convey to your staff and your teachers how much we appreciate what they Do we have a sign-up sheet?
We do. We have two people who signed up. We have Robert Butler and Richard Elkanig.
Mr. Butler, would you like to come forward?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Please state your name, and you testify, and you each have three minutes.
Do you want me to go first?
Of course.
Thank you. Good morning, city council. My name is Richard Koenig. Good morning to the Better Business Alliance and Portland educators and concerned citizens. How are the children? I'd like to speak to that question. It's on the table here before us. We're all children, and over the last several decades, maybe six or seven decades, we haven't been doing as well as the law requires us because, under the guidance of our legislature, public schools are supposed to, required, shall, provide a course in constitutional studies commencing no later than the eighth grade and continuing through college graduation. We're not getting that. The constitutions that you folks swore to support and probably think nothing particularly about are not, they're just not available to most of us. If you ask all the children, many of us have, who have grown up on the streets of Portland, what they know about the Constitution, what their favorite constitutional provisions are, they'll be hard-pressed. I've even gotten an answer like this, "Well, my freedom of choice, my freedom to wear the kind of clothes I want to." Well, that's, that's a good start, but it's hardly the kind of education that one would hope to get from a course in constitutional studies every year. I think that one of the things that city council ought to do is provide that curriculum, that course in constitutional studies that's going to be administered to the Portland Police Bureau, to the public schools as soon as possible. And I think that any additional funding to our schools ought to be tied to compliance with the law, especially the law that requires a course in constitutional studies every year commencing no later than the eighth grade. Thank you.
Mr. Butler, could you give that to the council clerk, please? Go ahead and begin, Mr. Butler. She'll pass it out while you're talking.
My name's Robert Butler. I'm at 824 Southwest 18th Avenue, Portland, Oregon. This is my first visit underneath the current mayor, and it's a pleasure to be here. My comment has to do with, well, first of all, I wished I had an ordinance to look at before I spoke, but we don't seem to have ordinances for the public today on this agenda item, but I will speak without it. I've given you a handout. It's curious that the increase of the business tax that you're proposing today, just coincidentally, is enough to eliminate the prejudice against small employers. That amount is enough that small employers and large employers could be on this same level playing field. I thought I'd show you what happens when you have a prejudice against small employers with regards to this tax. You see, in the typical example, the small employer pays four, five times more, apples for apples, than the large employer. Now, the math for this surcharge tax is the small employer pays 4.6 times more than the large employer. That's called prejudice. Now, you just heard from what I call the Portland Big Business Association, and they love this, this prejudice against small employers. They really love. I think it's wrong. I think this council should exhibit tolerance. Tolerance is not just for one special interest, but all, including small employers. And I, so I appeal to your morality to fix this and see how easy it is to fix. If you were to change this ordinance from helping small education to limiting prejudice, putting small employers on a level playing field, showing and putting small employers on a level playing field, showing morality and character, how easy it would be and what a better example for our community. I am aware of the last proposal that we came up about helping small employers out. I called it a sham. That was if there were some random events of surpluses in our budget and a few of those crumbs would be kicked out towards small employers. The prejudice would never even be eliminated in that case, and the promise unknown when it would ever happen. I regret that sham, and I encourage you to do something just as simple as this and to do something that's more important than paying for teachers, and that's exhibiting character, ethicalness, and morality.
Thank you. Did you wish to respond to that?
We've actually, you've handed me this before, and there are some changes that we need to make to this, absolutely. If you could turn around, though, and look back there, and Terry, if you could go over with Mr. Butler, because we've been over with her this sheet, I think it would be useful for her to hear in detail the assumptions behind your sheet, and I think it would...
Terry is extremely familiar with my position for almost 10 years now.
If I could just finish, I think it'd also be really useful to hear sort of some of her questions and comments on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say that in talking with the Portland Business Alliance in the last year, that their single issue for them in supporting this was the city agreeing to provide some relief to small businesses. So I just wanted to correct the record on that part. Is that all the people who've signed up?
That's all who've signed up.
Okay, please call the roll.
This is a non-emergency.
Okay, then it moves to a second reading, does it? Does anybody wish to have any closing comments?
I would like to make a couple of comments. I've really been struggling with this proposal, as you know, Mayor, and I've spoken with certain members of the council about it, not because I'm not in favor of making hard decisions here and raising revenue for the schools because they need it, but because I'm trying to be consistent, and sometimes it's unpopular to be consistent. I voted against Commissioner Adams' attempt to raise the deduction for small businesses because, not because I didn't think he was trying to do the right thing, because there was no proposal to replace the revenue. I have one time since being on the council made a vote that I regret, and that one time was lowering the utility franchise fee from 7% to 5% without anybody identifying how we would replace that revenue. And I think that was a mistake on my part, and I regret it. I'm not going to do it again. I think that the surcharge is reflective of the character of our business community, and I appreciate very much them doing that. But I can't understand how, at the same time, they'd like to see us reduce the business license fee when there are other, more appropriate means to raise revenue. And for those who are used to hearing me talk on this subject, you'll know what I'm going to say. For those of you that aren't, let me point out that the obvious, I think, mistake the council has made over the last few years is not addressing updating our utility franchise fee agreement specifically. People are turning off landlines and turning on cellphones. And if you're fortunate enough to live in the City of Portland, you pay nothing. If you live in San Francisco, you pay 16%. If you live in Seattle, you pay 21%. If you live in New York, you pay 20-plus percent. Portland is the only large city that does not have a utility franchise fee for cellphones, and it's revenue that, in my view, is unjustified in not coming into the city. And it would be a steady stream, I think, that I heard Commissioner Saltzman mention once, and I agree with him, I've come to agree with him, that it's a steady stream of revenue that we could partially dedicate to the schools. And, you know, I've been in elective office in one form or another for approaching 15 years, and there's a maximum in politics. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. The best tax is the tax somebody else pays. I get that. I get no joy having been the point person on this council on this issue, believe me. But, in my view, the fairest tax is the one that is as low as possible, that is paid by as many people as possible. That is the fairest form of taxation, and this is not a surprise to anybody on the council. I've raised this issue during these discussions to fund the schools. I couldn't even get the question put on a poll with the other issues that the public was going to respond to. I think it's a mistake. In the long run, I'm going to reluctantly vote for this. I've toyed back and forth whether to try to make a point by voting no. I think my point might be lost in voting no, so I'm going to vote yes. I wanted to explain that this week. But when a proposal comes before the council here soon, and I suspect it will, to reduce the fee again, I will support it if there is replacement revenue tied with it. I will not support reducing the fee. It puts me, I think, in an awkward spot, but I'm going to try to maintain some consistency. I'm hoping that the council decides to take this issue up in the next year. It is important for the long-term fiscal viability of the city that we address the utility franchise fee update in our code, and I'm going to keep harping on it until I'm gone unless we fix it. So thanks for giving me a moment to speak to that.
Other comments?
Well, I just want to thank you, Mayor, for your dogged leadership on this issue. Having been through three or four of these kinds of efforts over the past 14 years, it is always a roller coaster. It is always incredibly difficult and getting more difficult, and I just want to thank you for your efforts in this area. I also want to thank all the partners that were involved with this, the Citizens Group led by Shoda Zono, especially all the school board folks that have been part of this. Want to underscore that this is being distributed on a per-pupil basis to all the districts, and I think that that is the fairest way to go. So obviously, we have a lot of work to do in the next legislative session, and we'll continue to be there with you. Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, I guess, thank you, Mayor. I'd say briefly, I also want to thank the folks who've worked on this. It's tough to each, every couple of years I have to keep coming back in with another package, but I think the business community has done that, as have you, Mayor, and echo Commissioner Adams' point and the others that we need to go back to the legislature. And I want to just build quickly on what Commissioner Leonard said. I think that we really have to get to some structural answers to this. And one of the things that happened when I was out campaigning was, what I was able to hear was almost many different groups discussing the same problem. It was kind of the blind people and the elephant type of thing, where I think Commissioner Leonard's right. We have to take a look at the overall tax structure if we're going to get the small business support, but I think there's a way to do that. I don't want to hijack this discussion and talk about it for great length, but I think we can do that, and I'm very committed to try and come back. My reluctance on Commissioner Adams' resolution last spring, and frankly, the Business Alliance is tying the two, was I didn't think the package was strong enough and that it was together, but I think the principles are solid. And so I think we can get there and use this as a building block so that maybe next time we don't have to have that choice, which I don't think anybody really appreciates. I did also want to mention that I think the school funding issue, actually, we have to look at just a little bit bigger than money, and I think this is relevant to this approach. The council has undertaken an initiative recently to try and better link housing policy in schools. It's different with the different districts. You have some of the districts on the east side of Portland who are basically coming apart at the seams because of too many students, and you also have Portland Public Schools who are losing about 500 students a year, and I see that as integral to their funding problem as the actual cash from the legislature. And so if we can do a better job of tying our housing policy and helping families get housing that they can afford near the schools that have openings, I think we could make better sense of this, too. So I see a broader city planning, housing package tied to a more sustainable tax structure that supports business as the building blocks then go with the superintendent's reform. There's kind of three parts to this, and I think if we can go down to the legislature and say, "We are united with the business community on a tax structure that gives their share to schools. We have more city focus on getting the students in there, and we have superintendents who are working with their school boards and parents to do some educational reform and better, more efficient, even though efficiencies won't be enough for school funding, more efficient use of school dollars." You know, you'd like to think that's a package we could sell with the legislature. So I'll stop there and look forward to supporting this.
Commissioner Saltzman? Well, I want to thank just a ton of people, because a ton of people have been involved in this process, and it has been going on for almost a year now. And we've looked at many different ways to try to fix this problem. And I look at our solution today as a stopgap measure, that the real solution lies in Salem, Oregon, and that our job as businesspeople, elected officials, schools, parents, citizens, is to make our voice known to the legislature. And to that end, we have created a long-term school funding committee to begin the discussion around the state with other communities in the state about what our responsibilities are towards our children and towards education. So I'm really committed to that. I will be taking some trips around Oregon, talking to mayors about different issues, but at the top of the list is school funding, because I believe it's incumbent upon each community, and this is an Oregon problem, not a Portland problem, it's an Oregon problem. Each community has to, I think, come to grips with their future and what they want to do in terms of providing an adequate level of funding for education. So this is a good step. Thank you, Sandy McDonough, the PBA Small Business Advisory Committee, the school districts themselves, and citizens. This is something so important to our future, and I appreciate all your efforts. And I would also like to thank Kate Raphael. Kate, are you here? Just raise your hand if you are. You don't have to say anything.
I'm hiding.
Oh, there you're hiding. Kate Raphael is on my staff and has really taken this on upon for the mayor's office to really continue to shepherd this process because it requires constant attention. It's not something you can give a few minutes to and walk away from. So Kate, thank you. Thank everybody for being here. And this will be voted on next week, so we will not be taking a vote today. So thank you all for being here. Please read the 10:00 PM time cert.
Item 779 directs the city attorney to draft changes to the City of Portland Charter and other documents necessary for certain reforms to the fire and police disability and retirement system for referral to voters in November 2006 general election and confirm council commitment to measure the success of the reforms to provide greater accountability to the residents of the city.
Commissioner Saltzman?
Well, Mayor Potter and members of the council, the discussion we're about to have on this resolution certainly syncs up well with how you start every council meeting with "How are our children?" and underscoring our responsibility to future generations. And even the discussion we just had now on the business income tax surcharge, the responsibility those of us in elected office and residents of Portland throughout have to our children and to our grandchildren is very apropos for the discussion we're about to have on reforms to the fire, police, disability, and retirement system, because much of this is about minimizing financial impacts on our children and our grandchildren. A year and a half ago, the council started down the path of reforming the Fire and Police Disability and Retirement System, or FPDNR. In February of 2005, the council created an independent review committee, the IRC, to oversee a comprehensive analysis of the FPDNR system. In January of this year, the reform committee was created to propose comprehensive reforms to the system. Today, the work of my fellow council members, the mayor, city staff, numerous citizens and representatives of the police and fire bureaus culminates in the resolution before us. This resolution directs the city attorney to draft changes to the charter to refer much-needed reforms to the voters this November. The resolution is an extremely important step in this process, and it has been introduced and sponsored by all five members of the council. The proposed reforms to the FPDNR system are significant reforms to both the pension and the disability system. The reforms are both fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and are fair to our public safety officers. In regards to the pension system, the city currently faces a $1.64 billion unfunded property tax liability. If we do not correct this problem, we will leave our children and our grandchildren the legacy of an $8 billion liability. We also risk the future of our city's financial health and the availability of city services if we do not correct this problem. This threat to the city's financial well-being, the unfunded property tax liability, has been studied seven times. The first report in 1982, a city club report. If all goes well now today, the voters will, for the first time in nearly 24 years, actually have an opportunity to weigh in on this matter. The reforms we will ask voters to approve in November corrects this looming problem by moving all new police and firefighters into the state PERS, Officer System, or the state PERS system for short. In addition, instead of contributing to the social security system, the city would make a contribution to a 401K-like account for all new police and firefighter hires. By not contributing to the social security system, those reforms will save taxpayers over $387 million in 40 years. Equally important, the reforms to the disability system are significant and sweeping and real. As the Independent Citizens Committee indicated, the major problem with the current system is that disability experts do not make decisions and claims. Instead, a board controlled by beneficiaries of the system have been making decisions on disability claims. For the public to have confidence in this system and our city, independent experts in disability matters must make claims decisions, and the system cannot be controlled by beneficiaries of the system. The reforms before council today ensure us the use of neutral and independent experts to make claims decisions. The reforms also ensure that beneficiaries will no longer control the system. Moreover, the new five-member Board of Trustees will be not involved in any way in individual claims decision-making. In addition, these reforms bring the FPDNR system into the existing structure at the city, ensuring more oversight by council oversight that is so sorely needed. Another cost-saving measure in this resolution is a provision to allow for subrogation. This provision will ensure that the city will be able to collect third-party insurance payments paid out to injured firefighters and police officers. The final piece of this resolution is to guarantee that the city will provide greater accountability to the taxpayers regarding the FPDNR system. An initial audit of the system will be conducted to allow the city to monitor and measure the system for success, as well as to provide guidance to improve the system. The public deserves a chance to vote on these reforms in November, to fix this flawed system and to ensure that we do not leave a legacy of debt to our children. And before I close, I just want to note that the Portland, the City Small Business Advisory Council met this morning and has distributed to us the following memo, which I'd like to read. "Today, the Small Business Advisory Council voted unanimously to support the council's resolution to direct charge reforms to both the pension and disability portions of the fire and police disability and retirement system. The reforms outlined by council will begin to pre-fund the pension system. In addition, the reforms to the disability system will make much-needed changes to the claims decision-making process and completely revise the membership of the Board of Trustees. The adoption of this resolution is consistent with the Small Business Advisory Council's economic development position, which emphasizes, among other things, the importance of a healthy business environment to encourage business formation, growth, expansion, and the creation of jobs." Thank you.
Are there a group of people who are going to testify on this?
We didn't have anybody invited, so I'm sure there's public...
Okay. Is there a sign-up?
Is there a sign-up sheet? Are there any public employee unions that have signed up?
We have Robert Kane.
Okay. Is someone representing from the fire bureau wish to speak?
Ed Hall, sorry.
Thank you, folks, for being here.
You're welcome. Good morning. We thought it'd probably work best if we just made one brief statement together, but for the record, I'm Ed Hall of Portland Firefighters Association. But before Robert got started, I'd kind of like to take just a quick moment and make a personal observation, if you don't mind. And I think if you would have asked me even six months ago, I wouldn't have guessed that we'd all be sitting here today as we are. Given the pretense under which this process started, there were more reasons to argue and fight than there were not to. And I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for providing the leadership and creating the opportunities for us to address real issues and find real solutions. And I'd also like to thank your deputy chief of staff, Austin Raglione, for keeping the dialogue moving forward. And I know that it was a genuine effort to find a fair solution, and I am grateful for that. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Robert Kane, the president of the Police Association, and I'm grateful to be here today to talk to you about this council resolution. Over 18 months ago, the city announced its intent to reform the police disability, the fire, police disability, and pension system. And in case you don't know, there's little that causes as much anxiety for police officers and firefighters than uncertainty about their disability benefits. Representatives from police and fire associations have participated in months and months of meetings, citizen review committee meetings, as you know, city council hearings, and continuous meetings with our memberships. The result is the proposal that's in front of you today, and we believe is fair for the taxpayers and for the police officers and firefighters of our city. First, we want to begin by thanking the citizen members of the work groups who gave considerable time and energy in this effort. We didn't always agree on every issue, but we did share a common goal, and that goal was to provide a disability and pension system that was sustainable for the city and was fair to police and fire. And as Ed said, Mayor, we want to thank you for your commitment, for your leadership in developing a process that included a legitimate role for all the stakeholders, and that includes police officers and firefighters. As Ed said, we wanted to walk away from the table probably more times than I can count. I'm sure there were others who wanted to do that as well, but it was your leadership and it was your tenacity that kept us at the table, working together. The result is a proposal that meets the needs of the city, the public, and provides for a disability system and a retirement system for police officers and firefighters that we can have confidence in. And as you know, that's, all of that's very important to us. The proposed reforms, they bring more transparency, they bring more accountability to the disability system, and they finally begin doing what we've all been talking about for more than a decade, and that, of course, is pre-funding the retirement system. It's not perfect, but it's, we think it's a substantial step forward and a step in the right direction. So having said all that, I'm pleased to announce that, or to share with you, that this last, over this last week, the police union and the fire union executive boards met, and we both voted to support the city's resolution of proposed charter changes to the FPDNR system. And, you know, in this sort of work, you all recognize that it's an ever-moving finish line, so we're obviously not completely done, and we look forward to working collaboratively with you and with other stakeholders as we hammer out the amendments for the charter over these next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. Thank you for your partnership. Yes. Could you please read the folks who signed up?
We have seven people who signed up. If you come up three at a time, we have Brian Bu, Joe Gray, and Don Williams.
I see one. Are the other two folks here?
That was Brian Bu--
Football.
Football, sorry. Joe Gray and Don Williams. How about--
If he'd learned how to write clearer, she couldn't read--
Thank you, folks, for being here this morning. When you speak, please state your name for the record, and you each have three minutes. We'll begin with you, sir.
I'm Don Williams, president-elect of the City Club of Portland, and I might preface my testimony by saying that it echoes much of the information that was in the Oregonian editorial this morning. I think that's worth consideration. After more than a year of study of the Portland Police and Fire Disability and Pension System, the city council is now in a position to remedy a problem of great magnitude facing the city. The unfunded liability, the police and fire pension system, has tremendous long-term implications that have left unresolved, adversely affect the economic vitality of our community. While the pension system jeopardizes the financial health of the community, the disability system suffers from structural flaws and inadequate governance that have led to a history of abuse. I served on the 2006 City Club Committee, Research Committee that studied the system, and I might add, it supplemented 11 prior City Club studies, including the comprehensive report that was issued in 1988. The 1988 report was issued when the unfunded liability approached only $600 million and states that pay-as-you-go is not a reasonable method for accounting or funding retirement benefits. The liability, as you now know, is $1.6 billion, and if no action is taken, will continue to rise to over $8 billion in 40 years. This unfunded liability threatens the city's ability to provide services to its citizen, jeopardizes its enviable AAA bond rating, and ability to collect future revenues from serial levies that are compressed by the, large part, by the FPDNR's primacy over other serial levies. In fact, in fiscal year 2004 and '05, Portland's three serial levies were compressed approximately for 30%. City Club recognizes the work of the mayor, the commissioners, and their staffs for developing the proposed reform, and the proposed resolution rightfully makes the following changes. It moves new hires into officer, pre-funds retirement of new hires, removes the FPDNR board structure to improve governance, and reduces the influence of beneficiaries of the system, moves decision-making authorities on disability claims to professionals in the field of claims management, removes the city auditor from the Board of Trustees, making it possible for him to audit the FPDNR without conflict of interest, and finally authorizes subrogation of third-party claims. We recognize that the proposed solution is a political compromise and, what some may say, is a necessary and appropriate compromise. However, we're disappointed the proposed resolution falls short of City Club recommendations in the following ways. First, the 6% IAP contribution was not negotiated through a collective bargaining process as it was with other public unions of the city. The additional 3% IAP contribution was also not negotiated through a customary collective bargaining process.
Go ahead and continue, sir.
Okay, thank you. Disability claims were not moved into workers' compensation to bring Portland police and firefighters into parity with their counterparts in virtually every other community in the state, and the proposed disability system does not address the structural issues that limit employees' abilities, injured employees' abilities to return to work. Proposed resolution would not create a system that holds police and fire bureaus accountable for reducing injuries as workers' comp would. Finally, while reading the IRC report at the beginning of the report, I was struck with a statement that says, quote, "This system is unique, and it may be the only pay-as-you-go retirement and disability system at the local or state level in the United States." Oregon citizens are proud of the fact that we do things differently here, but I would suggest that the intent of this slogan is to recognize Oregon's leadership in such programs as a bottle bill and responsible land use planning. I don't think we want to be remembered for Portland's antiquated and unique public pension system. In conclusion, this is a complicated issue, and as numerous reform efforts have previously shown, we are very pleased that the reforms that have been proposed thus far, particularly the pension system, are up for council review. Nonetheless, on behalf of the members of the City Club, we need to be cognizant that this may be our one opportunity for charter change in many years. I respectfully request that city council give further considerations to the shortcomings of the proposed resolution as listed above. Thank you very much for your leadership on this important issue.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Joe Gray, president of the Portland Retired Firefighters, and I brought a situation before you here a couple of weeks ago in regard to our widows, some of which, my feeling is that are very poorly dealt with. We have a situation under the old plan, and a plan that was instituted in 1948 and ran through 1989, which our pensions were predicated on the salary of a first-class firefighter only, and that's as high as it went. The chief of the bureau would retire on the salary of a first-class firefighter. Now, that was supplemented sometime, I think, in the '70s by the city council, who put in a supplementary pension to take care of battalion chiefs, captains in the police bureau, and so on and up. But the, under the old plan, everybody retired as a firefighter, even if he was chief of the bureau, that was his retirement. So, or police officer, patrolman, their first-class scale. And the, a person who retired with 20 years' service would have retired 40% of their salary, and a woman who was married to that man, or woman, would be in a situation where they could be, get as little as 36% of the 20-year pension, which was 40%. So that's, and that gets down to a pretty minimal amount of money when it comes to trying to survive in this world today. And given the fact that they have no social security, the city has held out on social security and saved millions of dollars in that respect. The cost of bringing these, mostly women, up to a situation where they would have 60% of a, the retirement of a firefighter or police officer, it would be somewhat of a minimal cost. And it's, the chart that they're on is strictly falls completely off the, it's almost a free-fall situation. So they're, because they're dying off at that rate, and within 20 years, it'd be almost gone completely. So it's not a major cost factor, and I was hoping that they would take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Potter, my name is Brian Bo, and I'm a principal with Bo Associates, a Portland-based consulting firm and an active member of the Portland Business Alliance, and I've been asked to make their statement this morning. It's my pleasure to do so. The Portland Business Alliance would like to begin by publicly thanking the council, and in particular Mayor Potter and Commissioner Saltzman, for bringing this reform proposal forward. After decades of studies, reports, committees, and news stories on this topic, we are very encouraged by this development and support the expeditious passage of today's resolution. The media and others have pointed out the seriousness and the consequences of the threat posed by the FPDNR system in its current form. Alleged abuses in the disability system and the grave fiscal danger presented by the pay-as-you-go pension system pose a significant threat to the fundamental soundness of our city's finances. The potential for the FPDNR system left, if left as is, to accumulate an unfunded liability, as noted earlier by the City Club colleague, to exceed $8 billion within 40 years, is a problem that must be addressed immediately, and the resolution before you today is an important first step. Members of the alliance are particularly concerned about the potentially damaging effect the FPDNR system may have on voter-approved levies if its problems are not addressed. The FPDNR levy, which has primacy, may compress other levies or require the city to use its general fund to cover its unfunded liabilities. The result would be that voter-approved levies, such as those for libraries, parks, or schools, or revenues for other critical city services, would be unavailable for their intended purpose. Additionally, this would pose a very real threat to the city's bond rating, further increasing costs for other important city projects. Earlier this year, as Sandy noted earlier, the alliance's Board of Directors approved a resolution stating that it would not support other measures on the November ballot that would compete with schools. However, we recognize that the reform package before council today is so critical for the long-term health of the city that yesterday, the Board of Directors approved a resolution to support FPDNR reform. The significant issues regarding the FPDNR system have been known for decades, yet there has never been the political will to achieve substantive change. Today, with this vote, the council is taking a tremendous step forward for the city, for taxpayers, and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, very much.
Next, we have Ron Ledbury, Chris Smith, and Erwin Mandell.
Thanks for being here, folks. When you speak, please state your name, and you each have three minutes. We'll start here.
My name is Ron Ledbury. I'm just a public interest advocate, just like you two. My primary objection is the use of the bonding authority to create cash, borrow money, to then ultimately give to private investment bankers to invest. That's the starting point of my objection. I would prefer that if you, when you propose a change to the charter, that you isolate the issues that need to be in the charter, that is, to repeal the current pension provision. You do not now need that, the authority in the charter to participate in state PERS. You can do that today even if you were to create a resolution, you're going to join PERS for new hires, or all, for all employees too, and make it contingent upon passage of the repeal of the current charter provision. And one other thing, if the charter, the current charter provision is repealed, the, all the parties can go to court for a final decision with the court, where you come up with a finite number, and you have a, you know, it's, then sign a release, satisfaction of all claims the city might have to all workers. The, if you review the Strunk case, the state court case, there's no continued right to participate in a pension program that had been in existence before. Basically, the OSPOA, Thorndale State Police case was effectively repealed, except for those people who had been in that court case in '96. When Strunk came along, the only, you read the Ballmer dissent, or the concurring opinion, that was the swing vote, that would be the ultimate audience of any challenge, legal challenge. I, you're going to create, effectively, two tiers. It's the same problem we've got with tier one, tier two. You're going to create two tiers going forward. The current firemen and police representatives cannot represent those people who are not yet in the system, because they have not yet been hired. I'll make the same arguments I would with the Portland public school system, that the tier, it would create a legal conflict of interest for anybody who, you know, because of the different tier status for pension system. Anyway, just--
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm Chris Smith, here with a couple of different perspectives this morning. First, as a neighborhood activist, I am concerned about the current situation that threatens the general fund and threatens to compress important levies passed by voters for other services. Also here, as a City Club member, in support of the City Club position, although unlike others you're going to hear from this morning from City Club, I'm not an authorized representative of City Club on this issue. And I'll just highlight, I think, the two key distinctions between the City Club recommendation and what you're taking up today, and that is the fact that our police officers and firefighters will not be in the state workers' compensation system, a system that seems to work quite well for other public safety employees in the state. And it's, you know, unclear to me why we have to have that distinction, and whether that distinction is ultimately beneficial to the city's overall fiscal health. And then also, the issue of the IAP pickup, which I believe, as it was for other city unions, should be the subject of a collective bargaining agreement rather than a precondition to a charter reform. to a charter reform. Thank you.
Morning, Erwin Mandell. I'm here to, in general, support the city club position, but not the recommendation that the police and fire union members who are disabled go into workman's compensation. The people I've spoken to who have been injured on jobs are not particularly enthusiastic about the workman's compensation system doing a fair job for them when they are disabled. First of all, we have a set of employees for this city who every morning get up with the possibility of being injured on the job, if not totally, fully disabled or even killed. They are not like any other set of city employees and perhaps Portland should remain in the lead and be different on this issue, where we take special care of those people from whom we ask so much. I think you're right in having a special compensation system for these employees, our uniform employees who we ask to risk so much every day. Other than that, I would fully, as a city club member, I would fully support the city club's position on the accountability issues. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Charles W. Rosenthal.
You know the drill, don't you? State your name and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor Potter and Commissioners. My name is Charles Rosenthal. I'm the Portland City Council's representative on the Fire, Police, Disability and Retirement Board of Trustees. Thank you for the effort invested by you and your staffs, particularly Shannon Callahan and Austin Raglione. I thank you for your attention to the reform of the FPDR system. I think you've come through on your campaign promises to pay attention to the issue. And I trust that now that your attention has been captured, you will continue to focus attention on the system, on systems for public safety officers, retirement and disability. Your current resolution is a major contribution to altering and improving these systems. You've filled the glass more than half-full and Portlanders should be grateful for that. But work remains for you to continue filling the glass and I think that you may find myself and others before you in the future to assist you in filling the glass further. It is also noteworthy that a positive feature included in the resolution is that you plan to do assessments and evaluation as you go forward and I look forward to seeing rather positive results from these changes. Thank you for your attention and good luck.
Thank you.
That's all who signed up.
I'd like to have Shannon Callahan, Judy Tuttle and Austin Raglione come up. I wanted to thank each of you personally for what you've done to make this happen. I really appreciate Shannon, you taking the leadership of Commissioner Saltzman and making this happen, Judy taking the committee through the process and Austin at the end, being able to tie this together. I really want to say thank to all of you. Any comments from our fellow commissioners?
Sure, I'd like to chime in on that too and really thank the three people in front of us because they really played pivotal roles, I think, in getting us to where we are today. You know, Judy Tuttle, staffed the original independent review committee and that's, you know, that's no small feat there. Shannon Callahan came onto my office, was it last January?
Seems so much longer ago.
Anyway, she's only been with me for a while and one of her first major assignments, well, after she helped draft the only, first ordinance in Oregon to regulate payday lenders and no small task in itself, then she was assigned the FPDNR issue. And it was at the same time that council had formed the reform committee, which was the second committee and Shannon was the facilitator for that committee. And I think she, she has the most dog-eared copy of the independent review committee report you could possibly see. She's read through it all, pages marked, highlighted, but she really took her task respons, you know, responsibility greatly to be an impartial person, even though she works for me and knows I have some views on this. But it was important that the process work and I think that's, the process did work. And then, you know, Austin Raglione stepping in also when the reform committee was formed and really sort of being the closer as well. Not to use a baseball analogy, the closer. She, she worked hard these last few weeks with Shannon's backup to really get everybody on board, including all five of us, the fire and police associations and many other people. So, I really want to congratulate all of you for your tremendous accomplishment that you have brought us, the point you brought us to today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other comments? Well, thank you all very much. You did the impossible.
I'd like to just say one thing. My name is Austin Raglione with the mayor's office. I joined the city of Portland in 1981. So, I was here in 1982 when that first report came out about our unfunded liability and the problems that we would face down the road. And here we are 25 years later with a city council that has taken the courage to move forward on this and Commissioner Saltzman, who has made this a priority for his administration. It's not sexy, it's not glamorous, it's tedious, sometimes it's incredibly boring, but you have done something really, really important for the citizens of this community and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And since, and Judy Tuttle for the record, since Austin opened the door for us to speak, I wanted to say also, I'm impressed with the fact that this is the way democracy is supposed to work. We had a citizens committee that did their work. It came back to staff for refinement and for review and it went to council and council is making the decision that needs to happen to affect this change. And again, I'm just pleased to see that that kind of democracy in action can work.
Shannon, you get the last word.
Well, thank you for your compliments and I guess it's your turn to vote now.
We're going to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. I just wanted the folks in the audience and out watching this to know that there are people behind the scenes that do tremendous work for our city and I think these folks exemplify that. So, there's no more sign up. Please call the vote.
Adams?
Well, when we began this process, I characterized the current system as broken and I think this gives us the best opportunity in a generation to fix it. I want to add to my thanks Mary Jo Markle, who attended almost all the meetings on my behalf, and Brian Hockabee, who replaced her the last couple of months for the 11th-hour work that you did on this. I appreciate it. Also, really want to underscore my thanks to our partners with organized labor. This moving forward is going to be a challenging campaign and it would have been very difficult without your support. It will still be challenging with your support and I think it's absolutely the needed reforms, but we still have a lot of work cut out for us. So, more work to come. I want to thank Commissioner Saltzman and the mayor for their leadership, acknowledge the great work from Commissioner Leonard and Commissioner Stan. This has been a really good team approach led by Saltzman, Commissioner Saltzman and Mayor Potter. Aye.
Leonard?
Well, I wouldn't pop the champagne corks yet. In many ways, this was the easy part and I say that as one who has been through this process before. If you found yourself advocating for these changes, then I expect you to be involved in campaigning for them to pass. We need to make sure that we have a coherent campaign strategy, a campaign structure, one for which I will volunteer my efforts if asked, because we need to now go out and have the voters adopt what it is that we're saying we believe needs to fix the system. And it's one thing to sit at council and debate these issues and think that you have it right. Believe me, it is another out in the community to explain to people why you want them to increase their taxes to save their grandchildren money. I've been through this debate before and I'm, I think I understand what it is that the voters are going to need to hear and I hope I have the opportunity in the upcoming months to help put the package together that will convince the voters to vote yes, because notwithstanding some of the comments up here, there's nobody that wants this to pass more than I do. I want it resolved behind us so we collectively, but I personally can move on from this issue. I'm tired of hearing both sides. I am tired of some of the hyperbole that associates itself with this issue and I think it's time for the voters to weigh in, pass this and we move on as a community. I think it is fair, it is balanced, it is a package that represents the best of what compromise has to offer the community. And again, I hope, I'm not picking up kind of a celebratory message here today that people will now walk away thinking the work is done because the real work is just beginning. And one more time, I would say that I hope that I have the opportunity to assist in whatever work needs to be done from now to November to get this to pass. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, first of all, respond to Commissioner Leonard with a resounding yes. We take you up on your offer. We need your help. We need every member of this council to help educate our public and do it in a smart way to get their support. But I, you know, I want to thank the Portland Business Alliance for their support, thank the fire and police associations for their support, Portland Police Commanding Officers' Association also for their support and participation, the many citizens who participated, both in the independent review committee and the subsequent reform committee, and all the members of the council and the staffs they assigned to the reform committee. It was a lot of work and I think it worked, worked well. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge Mayor Tom Potter for his political leadership on this important issue. Because of his leadership, dedication and perseverance, we are in the position we are in today with the support of the council and the key stakeholders. So, I'm very pleased. Let's vote. Aye.
Stan?
Well, I think it's mostly been said, so I don't think I'll repeat it all, but I, this is a good, reasonable compromise. It's, I've met with all kinds of different sides and actually in many cases you have reasonable disagreements. I mean, I think the members are very unwilling to take a risk with, with systems that they, that are not proven. And so, I think what this does is gets us a huge step down the way towards the pre-funding. It majorly reforms the disability system. If the reforms are not successful, the option of going to workers' comp does not go away. But if you go to workers' comp and it's a mistake from, from the way our members are treated, then, then it's hard to go back. So, I think this is the right way to go about it, the next round of steps. And I think what we're going to see is another, you know, sort of competing set of interests, which is today's taxpayers versus, versus the ones quite a bit down the road. And so, I think we really are going to have to, it's actually un-American to invest in the future this much and we're going to be, I'm making a joke, but we're going to need to go out and show people that moving their taxes up now really is going to serve the city's interests. And I think that's why it's so remarkable and in part because I think it was a contentious argument, because people were honest about their concerns, both on process and, and substance along the way, we've actually got to a point where all of the players are supporting this move forward. And I think as Commissioner Leonard and Saltzman said, that gives us a chance to pass it at the ballot. And so, I also want to thank all the people who've worked very hard on it. The city club committee also was terrific. I met with them and they did a wonderful job of keeping this thing focused on the facts. And so, I'm ready to work with everyone, try and get this passed. I do believe Portlanders will pass it and I also believe that it's not a sure thing, so we better get to work. Aye.
Potter?
You know, this is a momentous decision for the city. 58 years ago, this system was created. We've recognized the problems over the years and today, we're taking the action that I think is necessary to preserve the system, to ensure that, that the taxpayers are considered, are treated with consideration and so are the employees of the police and fire bureaus. I think this is one of the more significant votes that I will take during my tenure as mayor. And I think that even though we're not supposed to be a celebratory or whatever it's called, that Commissioner Leonard said, I feel good about what's happened today. We have never come this far before. But agreeing with Commissioner Leonard, that now this is something that we need to go out and talk to the public about in an honest and an open way, so that we can get the support and the passage of this at the charter review in November. So many people have put work into this, but you know, this, this started with Dan Saltzman and I think Dan Saltzman does deserve the credit for the leadership. And if he were to do nothing else for the remainder of his tenure, he will have done a lot. I know he'll do more, but I don't think that, that there will be many things that will talk this in terms of how it will impact the public treasury, how it'll impact our employees. And I've already said thank you to Shannon and Austin and to Judy, but also to our unions. This has been a difficult process. And you know, the, the unions agreed that they would stay in this throughout the discussion until we came to a conclusion and they did. And it's been difficult for them, it's been difficult for many people. But I wanted to thank personally Robert King, I also wanted to, and your executive board and the fire bureau in the back, or Bob Lemon and Ed Hall, just Paul Cora back there, and perhaps at home watching, Jack Fender, the president of the fire association. You folks have been tremendous. The IRC committee members, and I don't know if Jeff Furnish or Judy Rice or Judy Clark are here, are you folks here today? Thank you very much. You folks started something really important and I think it's culminated in this. The Portland Business Alliance, you know, any one of these groups, if they had chose to fight this, it would have been a very difficult situation for all of us, but instead, they chose to come to the table and to reach an agreement. If you were to ask any of us, is this a perfect agreement? I don't think any of us could say that. But is it fair and reasonable? I think it certainly is. And I'll take a phrase from the city club statement today, but change it around slightly, is that I think this is a necessary and appropriate compromise. And this is necessary and appropriate because it benefits our community, it benefits our police and firefighters and I think that it will fix the major problem that we have in terms of our unfunded liability. I think that it will stem significantly the amount of money that is going into disability. Already, FPDNR has seen some dramatic changes in the dollars that they're spending on disability and I think they're going to continue to see that. So, and I'd like to thank the city club. You know, you folks put a lot of time into this and I really appreciate that. Your report was excellent. I know that we looked at and borrowed much of it and that there are still differences, but the fact is that I think this is something that will benefit us well into the future. And every Wednesday, I talk about our children, in this case, I'm talking about our grandchildren, is that in 40 years from now, the city council that is sitting here, and perhaps only Randy Leonard will still be here. I couldn't resist that, Randy. But those folks, I think, will look back and take stock of what happened on this day and recognize that it was an important first step. Thank you all and I vote aye. We're going to now move to the regular agenda. Carla, I'd like to pull item 800. I'd like to have it come back next week so that we can have both the report and the ordinance read at the same time. read at the same time. And Commissioner Adams?
So on, Mr. Mayor and Carla, the item 791 is, I guess, folks are working on resolving the remaining issues on 791. So if I could amend my early request and have it held over to this afternoon instead of sending it back to my office?
Go ahead and read these titles and then we can act on them.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. 800, Authorized Price Agreements for Motor Fields for City Vehicles and Equipment. And that will be continued to June 21st, the AM morning session. Item 791, amend a memorandum of understanding with Kupiko LLC to add a provision for assignment of rights granted, correct site area, and clarify indemnification provisions.
And you'll have the people here this afternoon to discuss that? Hearing no objection from the council members, we'll do that.
That's passed to the 2:00 PM session.
Yes. Please read the first item.
Item 799, urge Congress to pass and President, and the President to sign the Military Readiness Enhancement Act of 2005, HR 1059, which eliminates the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy and adopts a policy of non-discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation with the United States Armed Forces.
Commissioner Adams?
I want to thank the council for their consideration of this. This sets forward the city council's outlook on this important issue. There are thousands of men and women who currently serve in the military that labor under these provisions of so-called Don't Ask and Don't Tell. As you will hear, not only are they extremely unfair to the individuals, but they limit the effectiveness of our military to protect this country. So this is a, a great opportunity in Gay Pride Month to highlight this issue, and there have been some folks that have been working hard on this. So if three of you would come forward.
Thank you, folks, for being here. Start to my left and your right.
If I could start.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
We'll start in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and particularly Commissioner Adams for helping us file this resolution and bring it to council for your approval and support. My name is Frank Dixon. I live at 2205 Northwest Johnson in Portland. I'm here today in my capacity as the president of the GLBT Caucus of the Oregon Democratic Party. We've been working and collaborating with the Service Members Legal Defense Network and Military Education Initiative to bring this subject back into public light and to garner support for congressional action to remove the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy, which is clearly discriminatory and means that American citizens serving in the military are not equal under the law. I've got a couple of folks in the audience that won't testify today. Kristen Fleckinger is our caucus vice president and Serena Boston is the constituency director for the Democratic Party that have also worked hard on this issue. You know, when I was a young neighborhood president in 1986, and there were pews in this chamber and we faced east rather than west, I had a lot to fear from going into a council with Commissioner Ivanci and Mildred Schwab from a neighborhood association perspective. But I also, at the same time, was serving as the commander of the Drill Sergeant at Canopy for the 104th Division. And I have to say during those days, I lived in daily fear that someone would notice myself and my partner, Dan Volkmer, at a political event and I would be ID'd as gay and subject to punitive action under military law. This is something that we need to work, to remove. I won't go any further in terms of the background on, on this resolution pending before Congress other than to say it makes sense from an economic standpoint, it makes sense from a national defense standpoint, and it surely makes sense, as you will see from the two folks here to testify, that it, from a human rights standpoint. Dr. Mary Ann Humphrey Keever published My Country, My Right to Serve. It's the earliest oral history book of service members, GLBT service members, and, and their stories. And she's here with her son, Wyn. On my left is Fred Fox. He is a former lieutenant in the United States Army. He served in Mogadishu in what was later to become a book and a movie. He's also served in connection with operations in Afghanistan and Iraq. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Fred.
Thank you. My name's Fred Fox. I live at 1812 Northwest Flanders. One of the things about this policy, when it first went into effect, was that it made the, the claim that having openly gay and lesbian service members under your command undermined leadership. And I spent, just spent 12 years in the Army, so I have a little bit of Army leadership experience, and it's kind of insulting to me. Not necessarily as a gay man, but as, as a leader. It's the, the concept that I'm so incompetent as a leader that if I have a soldier who is gay or lesbian under my command, I cannot lead them. My very first squad had a soldier from Compton and a soldier from what he referred to as Klan County, Tennessee. I'm not a miracle worker, but somehow I managed to get these two people to get along and we were quite a team. So I can't imagine that that would be any more challenging than having an openly gay soldier serve underneath me. I recently had an experience, I went on a tour of, of the nation, and we were, we were trying to reach out to the red states to discuss this issue. And it was pretty, it was a pretty interesting experience because we would encounter people who were very resistant to what we had to say. And they would come and they would hear us speak. And then one particular evening that kind of sums up what I think the tour accomplished and, and, and the issue at heart is, is we had, it was in Tennessee, and we had a group of students from a local Bible college came to hear what we had to say. And they were strongly opposed to, to us at the beginning. And an hour and a half later, after we were done discussing, one of them said to me something along the lines of, well, I still hate gays, but I see no reason why you can't serve. Once again, I'm not a miracle worker, but if I can do that in an hour and a half, I don't understand what the problem is of letting openly gays and lesbians serve. The Army, it's, 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 it's a reflection of our culture, but it's also a leader of our culture. It was the first federal organization to integrate in the 1950s for the Korean War, blacks and whites serving side by side. It was quite shocking at the time and supposedly it was going to undermine leadership and destroy the Army. That didn't seem to work. So I don't know, we'll have to try this experiment, I'd like to think, and see what happens when openly gay soldiers serve and see if that one destroys the military. Finally, I guess the only other little thing I want to touch on is when I came back from the tour, I'm finishing up an education program and, and I'm student teaching. And I came back from the tour and it just so happened that, that the classroom that I was in was doing a unit on equity and, and inequality and privilege and rights. And they were studying the history of, of laws and legislation that have limited and taken away people's rights. And it was kind of interesting the way they dealt with women's rights to vote and, you know, segregation, civil rights movements in the 60s. They were really, oh, that's interesting, it's ancient history, sort of, you know, how interesting that people ever felt this way. And when the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy came up, they were outraged. They couldn't believe that they were living in a time like this ancient history that they had just studied of the 1950s and 60s. And one of the students, in fact, we had a little debate on it and I kind of had to take the side of defending the policy because nobody else in the classroom wanted to. So it was a fun experience too. But one of the, the kids finally summed it up in about 20 minutes and he wanted to know, he said, if a classroom full of middle school students can figure out that this is wrong in 20 minutes, what's the problem? Why are we debating this on a national level? And, and that's what this resolution is going to help do. It's going to say, look, you know, this has been going on for a decade now. Why are we still dealing with this? It doesn't work. And then finally, I just got to touch on this because this is a personal thing for me. But in the part where it talks about the 10,000 service members that have been discharged in the first 10 years, and I keep saying this and it just drives me blank, oh, I was an infantryman. And it says nearly 800 with critical skills, of which 322 were linguists. Yeah, you know, linguist, that's a great critical skill, but I was an infantryman and without us, the linguists wouldn't have a job. So to say that only, you know, let's emphasize that 800 are critical skills, that's not label. Let's just let people serve and, and do what's right. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Mary Ann Humphrey Keever, and good morning to you, Mayor Potter. I haven't been on this side of the table before, so it's nice to see us in a different situation than partying. Anyway.
More about that later.
More about that later. Yes. I served in the military. I did write the book, My Country, My Right to Serve. And it is a history of gays and lesbians from World War II to the present day at that time. It was the, you know, the, the late 80s. And, and I don't want to say that I'm here to represent the souls of the many gays and lesbians that, that went through the military, you know, 100 years ago, because this has been going on forever. I will comment on Mr. Fox's comment when he did say that the military was integrated in the late 40s, early 50s by President Truman. The sad thing was, they were integrated into the military so that blacks and whites served together. But unfortunately, when they came home wearing the uniform of the US military, they were still without civil rights in this country. So we still had a long way to go as far as giving civil rights to blacks even at that time, until the 60s. So that's kind of, you know, a double-edged sword there. Yes, they could serve in the military, but they still had discrimination when they came home. Gays and lesbians have had discrimination since the dawn of time, through death, through burning, through harassment, through jail, through all sorts of things. And what I wanted to do here today was say that in my book, I think personal stories really touch your hearts and your souls. And I think that's what I'd like to do, is tell you about a couple of stories that really touched my heart when they were told to me when I did my research. I interviewed over 150 people across the entire United States, men, women, all services. I did have the opportunity to interview, almost an opportunity to interview, an admiral's aide from World War I. But believe it or not, in 1987, he was still worried that someone might find out that he was gay and in the military at that time and didn't want to tell his story. That's how much we fear from the military, even after they've been out for many, many years. But one woman went into the military, she was from South Carolina, and the only reason she went into the military, she came from a very, very poor family, and she had very bad teeth. And she wanted to go in the military because she heard that they had a great medical plan. So she went in thinking that she could get her teeth fixed. Indeed, she got her teeth fixed. But, you know, in the end, she really got them kicked out. Because while she was in the military, one of her other service members decided he was going to prove that she wasn't gay. So he raped her. She became pregnant and was still expected to stand duty in her unit. Her drill instructor said, you do not get out of duty simply because you're gay and simply because you're pregnant. And at eight months, when she should have been in the hospital because she was experiencing other kinds of issues with her pregnancy, he made her stand duty, her, her full time. She ended up going in the hospital, ended up having a miscarriage and, well, not a miscarriage, a premature birth, and then the, the baby died about five days later. When I interviewed this young woman, granted, her teeth were fixed, but her soul was destroyed because she was still missing that child that she lost because of how the military treated her. I didn't expect to do this. That's a long time ago. So that's one example. So she was still feeling this three years later, that how she was treated simply because she was gay was the result of a loss of her child, and she was still re-recorling from all of that. Another man who had gone through the military academy was a captain in the Army. He was arrested because he was gay and he was sent to Leavenworth Prison in Kansas. He spent four years in prison simply because he was gay, and that was the only reason. When he came out, I interviewed him, he still had seven years to go because he was now a felon and he had no rights as a citizen, even though the only reason he went to prison was because he was gay. This particular resolution that we're trying to pass here is simply to say, you are gay, it doesn't make any difference. You should be able to serve honorably. You shouldn't have to serve if there's a war on and now we'll use you because we'll use your blood, but in peacetime, you get kicked out. That's an oxymoron as far as I'm concerned. There's no reason why, if you can serve in wartime, you should also be able to serve in peacetime. The, the law should be eliminated, we should all be able to serve equally. And fortunately, more of the population of this country feels that gays and lesbians should be able to serve openly. And I think that's where we're going with this. We need to educate still further, but I think it's getting more on our side, and that's why we're here to say, we want you to vote for this, we'd love to have you vote for this, we'd love to have Portland be a city that says, we stand up for everyone. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
And thank you for our service, your service to our country. It's appreciated by many people.
Thank you.
Are there any people?
No, no one else signed up.
Okay. Please call liberal.
Well, I want to thank you.
Adams, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I want to thank you for being here today and it was a, we had a community meeting on this issue two months ago, after hours, and most of the folks that were in the room, there are probably over 60, 70 people in the room, are working people, so they couldn't necessarily be here today, but understand that the people that we heard from today represent tens of thousands, if not more, just in the local area. Thank you. Aye.
There I can't be more disappointed than to have a president and Congress who exploit this issue when they see that their failed policies are going to hold them accountable in November. And there's no other conclusion a rational person can come to when the president devotes his time and energy in the US Senate, debates issues relating to what I consider to be fair and equal rights of our gay and lesbian members of citizens of the United States. This issue to me is a no-brainer. I was disappointed at the time when Bill Clinton didn't do in his heart what he knew was the right thing and remind the military, they work for him and he not them, and just order that the rule banning gay and lesbian men and women from the military be rescinded completely. I think that in many ways, him trying to reach a compromise with them empowered them, unfortunately, and it's one of the few things that I'm disappointed about with President Clinton's presidency. I'm happy and proud to vote for this, but I also think, I was sitting here toying whether or not to say this or not, but I think it's important to say. Commissioner Adams has been a strong proponent of First Thursday's art programs here at City Hall. I've been, I've attended each one that I've been in town, and so I think I've missed one since they've started. And I mean, from beginning till I excuse my staff to go home and I, I don't stay for any reason other than I thoroughly enjoy them. And I, what I enjoy most, which won't surprise many, is not so much the art as the people that come that tell me over and over again that they had never had any reason to think they would come to City Hall but for these celebrations. And I was really deeply disturbed at the last First Thursday that we had that was dedicated to gay and lesbian art, when Commissioner Adams relayed to me some of the horrible emails he got, unfortunately, not just from the public at large, but from some city employees regarding our dedicating that First Thursday to regarding our dedicating that First Thursday to those members of our community. We have work to do here in Portland. I mean, we need to send this to Washington, and we need to make our views strong, but each of us here need to send clear messages to those in our bureaus that work for us that we will not accept those kinds of sentiments or remarks directed towards other human beings. Unfortunately, there is a long history in the United States of discrimination, and not just towards gay and lesbian men and women. I hearken back to just the Second World War and the indiscriminate rounding up of anybody who was of Japanese ancestry, whether they were born here or not. And you need only go back to the Civil War and the Dred Scott decision, and before that, women were considered second-class citizens. So there's a, there's a dark underbelly to some of the culture in the U.S. I'm not sure the nature of it, but this is one way for at least this city council in this part of the United States to make a statement that we will not accept that kind of discrimination against our citizens. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, lesbian, gay, and bisexual Americans have had a long and distinguished history in our military, some of which we know, most of which I suspect we don't know. But they have been in our military for, since the military's inception, I would go so far as to say. And there is absolutely no reason why they should be dismissed, discharged because of their sexual orientation or preference. And I think it's just worth noting that one clause in the WHERE S states that America's closest allies, including the United Kingdom, Canada, Australia, and Israel, allow lesbian, lesbian, gay, and bisexual service members to serve openly in their militaries, and the U.K. now actively recruits these service members. I think nobody would say that the, any of the militaries of these countries are second to anyone. And if we are going to continue to have a first-class military, we need to change this "Don't ask, don't tell" policy and urge our Congress to indeed improve the Military Redness Enhancement Act. So I'm pleased to urge our Congress to do that. Aye.
Sten?
Well, this is, yeah, it's hard, just a matter of human dignity and human rights, really, but I think also it's another place where pragmatically, our country is hurting itself. We need everybody who's ready to serve, and we also need to have a military where people are able to protect each other and support each other, and that's the kind of society we need to be. And I think, you know, this is one where, you know, I know change comes slowly, I would have thought by now we would have made more progress on this, and, you know, I'm ready and able to join and help in any way I can. I think this is a very important statement. I want to thank the team of activists who brought this in, and really, to the military public servants, because I think it's really something that's incredible, what you have done. I think you showed incredible bravery in addition to the bravery of serving in the forces by being willing to come forward and talk about your experience, and I think we'll be a stronger nation eventually because of it, and already are because we're having this conversation. So it's a, it's a pleasure to vote aye, and I'm ready to keep working.
Potter?
I want to thank the leadership at Commissioner Sam Adams on this. And the reason there are not five people supporting this is that it got to my office kind of late, and I didn't get a chance to review it. If I had had, I would have signed on as one of the council sponsors, so for that, I apologize to you folks.
I think we can, can we add that by unanimous consent?
Yes.
I believe we can, so I'd move to add the mayor's.
Let's do that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now it's five.
There. Nothing to apologize for.
And I want to thank you folks for coming in today. You know, there, there still remains so much to be done, but I think that in Portland, I want you folks and all of our gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgendered community to know that this city welcomes them. And this Sunday, I think you can see the effects of that at Gay Pride March. Myself, Commissioner Adams, and perhaps others of the commissioners will be there to march alongside of our community, to show support for them, but also to show that we honor them and we respect what they do in terms of their contributions to our community and their value to us as a community. So thank you for staying in, in the fight, because it is, it's a civil rights issue. And as I tell my daughter, is that when you're reading the history books, it's one page at a time and it goes very quick. When you're living it, it's a decade at a time, and it seems like it would take forever. But it won't. My hope is, in my lifetime, that we can fundamentally alter how people think about this particular group of people who are valuable citizens and contributors to our society, and how we accord them the rights that the rest of us tend to take for granted. So thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you, Commissioner Adams, and thank you for the city council. I vote aye. I would like to bring up item 787, which I pulled off the consent. Is there someone from the city, from ONI to address this issue?
Item 787, amend contracts with the five neighborhood association district coalitions for program operations to provide for fiscal year 2006-07 funding.
I'm hopeful that someone from ONI will show. You folks want to come up and say a few words? Please state your name for the record.
I'm Sylvia Boger, and I'm director for Southwest Neighborhoods. It's a pleasure to be here today on behalf of Southwest Neighborhoods and our 16-member neighborhood associations, to say thank you for investing in the neighborhood system. On June 26, we'll be celebrating our annual volunteer recognition event, and our theme this year is "Retreasure Our Volunteers," because the real treasure in our community is the people who work to improve and maintain the livability of our neighborhoods. So we'll be celebrating volunteers that have organized at least seven stewardship groups in our area, that every month plant trees in our parks and native plants, and pull ivy in our green spaces. We'll shine a spotlight on community members that pull together to improve transit options between neighborhoods and local businesses, residents that organize litter patrols, and work to identify safe walking paths to schools, and form partnerships with our bureau staff to improve our transit and our safety of our streets, and improve land use decisions. And all of this does not get done without an investment to help them reach out to their communities. And the dollars that will go along with this contract will help us to invite others to participate in their neighborhoods, to problem-solve, to get involved and organize neighborhood emergency teams, to do a host of things that they've been wanting to do through the Neighborhood Grants Program. So we're mainly here today just to say thank you.
I'm Allison Stoll. I'm the director of Central Northeast Neighbors, and I'd like to say ditto to everything that Sylvia just said. She did a really great job of putting that together. Sylvia and I work across the river from each other, but we basically work with the volunteers in the neighborhoods and in our community. Neighborhood associations have obviously been around Portland for a long time. They represent the neighbors that are in our city. And as we grow and change, we're looking forward to making more contacts with the larger, broader community. We in our area are not only working with eight neighborhood associations, we're working with five business associations. I have an organizer. We just organized the Central Sandy Business Association, a brand-new business association, and that work was done through our Neighborhood Coalition Office, which is really a wonderful collaborative partnership. And again, we want to say thank you to all of you commissioners and to our Honorable Mayor for supporting this system and working with us to keep improving it and keep working together for those partnerships with everyone out in the community. So thank you.
My name's Brian Hoop with the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. Sorry for being late. I was told we'd be at the end of the morning agenda. So I want to acknowledge gratitude to the council for their support for these new resources going to Portland's neighborhood system. I think it's our understanding it's been at least 15 years since there's been a significant increase in financial resources to the neighborhood system. And I want to thank the community volunteers, neighborhood volunteers who participated in our Budget Advisory Committee this winter and spring. They came together with the task of looking at cutting, or showing 1%, 2%, 3% cuts as all bureaus were asked to do, yet they also took on the challenge of proposing what would be the right budget for the Office of Neighborhood Involvement and for the neighborhood system. And fortunately, there was support from the council members to support some of those proposals they had. Eric, or Commissioner Sten and Leonard, I think it was Team A or Team B you were on, endorsed the idea of adding even additional, even more additional dollars to the neighborhood And briefly, we'll describe some of these ideas, but there's much more work to be done. I want to remind you that the Bureau Innovation Project, the Number Eight Committee, is going to be continuing and looking at how do we grow and strengthen the neighborhood system and citizen participation in Portland. And I encourage the commissioners' offices to participate in that dialogue if you have ideas or concerns about the future of the neighborhood system. And specifically, what the new funding will provide, you've received a handout, it's roughly $330,000 in new funds that will be going to direct support to the neighborhood system. One, for a neighborhood grant program, something that neighborhood leaders have asked for for many years. I know that when Sam Adams was Chief of Staff of Eric Katz's office, back in the mid-'90s, you guys began researching a grant program, and I think there have been one or two other commissioners in the last 10 years who've also proposed the idea. Secondly, there's going to be new funding for communications, newsletters, and online communication dollars for neighborhood groups. And third, it'll provide new funding for operating funds for insurance. This has been a big concern since 9/11. The insurance industry has gone through a lot of major changes, and for several years recently, it was increasingly difficult for the neighborhood groups or the district coalitions to find affordable insurance, and it was a really important need to many neighborhood leaders that they feel like, that they could participate in the neighborhood systems without the fear of being under, or liable for potential legal suits. And the Bureau Advisory Committee is developing a, has approved a funding formula that I handed out to you, how those dollars would be distributed, and we're very excited that they took on the challenge of coming up with a more equitable distribution system to acknowledge how many neighborhood groups are in each coalition, the number of households, and more importantly, for the grant program, actually looking at median income levels, looking at some of the coalition areas maybe need additional resources due to, you know, trying to do more outreach to underrepresented constituency groups, lower-income folks, communities of color, et cetera. And we still have some work to do this summer, developing, agreeing upon what those funds can be used for and performance measurements. And lastly, I also want to thank some of the other new funding that has been approved, but isn't part of this contract amendments, but it's been approved for ONI's budget, is the Diversity Civic Leadership Committee, which was led by a number of the district coalitions, and about a half dozen community-based groups participated, has worked for two years looking at how can we do more outreach to underrepresented community groups. And they proposed several, or several of the proposals were adopted by our Budget Advisory Committee this winter. Number one, what you'll be seeing is we'll be developing an RFP for People of Color Leadership Academy that will provide resources to community of color-based organizations to help build leadership skills and the capacity of organizations of color to participate more in the civic life of the city, and also to help build more relationships and working partnerships with the existing neighborhood association system. And lastly, there'll be $45,000 that will be granting to several of the coalitions to do some very targeted outreach efforts to several neighborhood associations to look at, how can we measure, if we really focus on diverse outreach efforts, how can we measure progress in expanding the membership, the leadership of those neighborhood associations to constituency groups that have traditionally not been active in neighborhood groups? So these are all things we're very excited about, and I know we have a lot more work to do with the Innovation Project Number Eight Committee.
Thank you, folks. Amalia and Elizabeth, would you like to come up and make a couple of statements? Well, would you?
All right, an exercise in winning it. I'm Amalia Larkong, and I guess I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said to just say thank you to all of you for giving us certainly the first budget in my history with the city that has actually given us some good news to take out to the community. And I want to say thank you particularly to Commissioner Leonard, who said, "Hey, why can't we give you some more money?" And Mayor Potter, who said, "Hey, that's a really good idea." And everyone else who supported that as well on council. We've got some really fabulous, really exciting things that we're implementing in the next fiscal year. As we look at the system, we are looking at performance measures for everything that we're doing out in the community, as well as allowable use of funds. It's a community process that's dictating for us how that's all going to go, and so everything that you've done, there's not only the benefit of the money at the hands of neighborhood people being able to finally do some projects, there's also side benefits, which means that people have had the latitude and the luxury to talk about a funding formula, which has not been the case in the past, that people are having the latitude to talk about ways in which the money can be used with performance measures and appropriately. We are having the latitude to look at the greater good of Portland and not just our own little pieces of Portland. And so what you've done is really given the system the freedom to breathe and to implement some of the things that we've been talking about for a very long time. So thank you for that.
And I think I would just add, I think one of the unintentional consequences.
Why don't you tell us who you are first?
I'm sorry. Elizabeth Kennedy Wong, Policy Manager in the Office of the Mayor. But this is, for six months, community members, more than 30 of them, have been coming together and really struggling with really hard issues about how do we engage people, what's it going to take to engage people, how are we going to allocate limited resources? I think that exercise was a really good example of what we've been talking about in our office a lot, about community governance and really engaging the community and government in a partnership about how do we address challenging issues. And then another benefit was when you guys came along in the budget process and said, "We're going to give more money to this system to look at how we're working with the community." And then council became engaged in that conversation, which really was, I think, the essence of what community governance is about, is the council and this committee working together to figure out how are we going to support citizen participation and engage in the community members. And I also just want to touch on the conversation that the committee had about how do we allocate resources, and I think it is really profound that they were able to tackle that conversation in a really healthy and productive manner, and really say, "How do we do this work in a way that really addresses people's needs across the community and put more resources into communities that may need more?" And it was at a cost to some groups and organizations, and they were willing to make those sacrifices, and I think the fact that they were able to do that in a very healthy way, that in the end, everybody feels really good about the process, gives a lot of credit to both the Office of Neighborhood Involvement and the committee and the people who worked on it. So thank you guys for your support in this as well.
Thank you, folks. We don't have a sign-up sheet, so please take the vote.
Adams?
Well, I guess if I was a more effective public servant, it wouldn't have taken 16 years to get the restoration of the grant program, which I think, if I recall correctly, went away about 25, 30 years ago, the Neighborhood Needs Assessment Process. So it's good to be, it's good to see it come back. I think that the kind of success that we're experiencing in the Neighborhood Business District Grant Program, we will see tenfold in this, and I want to thank team, the other team and the mayor for putting that forward. I want to thank the staff, ONI, Elizabeth, Brian, and everybody for just some really good work, especially in the last year of making changes, and that's a breath of fresh air through the, through the organization in terms of what you're accomplishing, and you'll continue to have my strong support. Aye.
Leonard?
Well, I had the honor of leading Office of Neighborhood Involvement for a couple of years, and as most people know, I had some suggestions on how to connect it better with the community. And one of, and I think when people are making suggestions like that, it is, you become more responsible than when you discover what some of the issues are to help fix them. And what I consider to be some of the limitations on the Office of Neighborhood Involvement in reaching out better to other members of the community was they didn't have the resources to do it. So it's really hard to be critical when you recognize exactly what the problems are and you have the means by which to address it. And it's not hard. And it's not hard, it's hypocritical to do that. And so I was really pleased to work with Commissioner Sten and Mayor Potter on the funding that we were able to get this time to follow through with what we had identified as a shortcoming, and that was on the part of the City Council, not committing the resources so ONI could do the work that it, I believe they are a tool to do and do very well. So I'm really, was pleased to help with this and very pleased with working with the mayor and all of my colleagues here on addressing this really important funding issue. Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I'm very pleased to support this. Many of the themes of the enhanced funding are things that are still sorely needed in our neighborhoods, and that is representation of citizens who don't look like us, people who rent, peoples from minorities, people that have families. These are constituencies still not present at the table, in my opinion. And I've visited lots of neighborhood meetings over the last six months. But I do want to, you know, commend the effort. I commend that it's flagged out here in Bureau Innovation Project Number Eight, and hopefully will be reflected in the budget we're approving today. It's something we have to figure out how to do. We can't afford to just toss our hands up and say it's just not going to work. We have to figure it out. And I hope that things like the diversity academies will work, but I also want to express a dose of skepticism right now that those monies not go to sort of the same old players who bring the same people to the table as representatives of the minority community. I want to reach out to people, you know, who we've never met before, who aren't associated with the same providers that are going to be applying for that money. And it's a challenge to do that. It's not comfortable. But again, I feel it's incumbent upon us to do that. And I want to close by just saying what admiration I have for the coalition staff and ONI staff as well. But, you know, the coalition staff I've known over the years, and I really want to just commend all of them for their consummate dedication to the goals of citizen involvement, neighborhood participation. They really are a tremendous group of people, as are the ONI staff. Aye.
Sten?
Well, I guess I'll just say I'm really, really enthusiastic about the way it's going, and good work. Aye.
Potter?
You know, the, this process has really been interesting because it's been driven by the community. This isn't something that was dictated to the community. We told them what the available money was. They made determinations on how to best and most effectively use that money. They did take into consideration the issues and concerns of the council in terms of being more representative of the communities that they serve. So thank you to the ONI Bureau Advisory Committee. Thank you to the coalition offices. Thank you to Amalia and the staff of ONI. I think you folks have really, this is going to be a wonderful thing to watch unfold in the next 12 months as to how citizens in Portland, who've always been the backbone of our community, become engaged in this and our visioning process and really develop a strong voice that is heard not only here at City Council but throughout the rest of our community. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it, and I vote aye.
Just wanted to take a, is anybody going to be, we have one emergency vote. Should we be hearing that first? Is anybody planning to leave?
I have a meeting that's going to start in my office soon that I'm going to have to leave for.
Okay. Could you please read item 803?
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gresham for the Revenue Bureau to administer the Gresham Payday Lender Code.
Mayor and council, I'm Sue Clubertans, Revenue Bureau Director, the Office of Management and Finance. Very briefly, what you have before you authorizes an agreement with the City of Gresham for the Revenue Bureau to administer the Gresham Payday Lender Code. Following the City of Portland, Gresham adopted nearly identical payday lender ordinances. And our two cities, Gresham and the City of Portland, encompass over 95% of the payday lenders in Multnomah County. And since many of the payday lender companies have locations in both Portland and Gresham, compliance will be easier since rules and enforcement between the two jurisdictions will be the same, and the businesses will only have to learn one set of rules. Just so that you know, we're currently discussing similar agreements with Troutdale, Wood Village, and Beaverton. So this would allow us, hopefully, to create some efficiencies and economies of scale as well as make it more efficient for the businesses that must comply with these new laws.
Questions from the commissioners? Well, see, I think this is a really smart way to do business, and on such an important issue as payday loans, the city's coming together, I think, will show a very strong front to the, to the payday lending industry, let them know that we mean business. So thank you very much. Was there a sign-up sheet for this?
There was, but no one signed up.
Please call the vote.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I want to echo the mayor's comments. This is very, very good news to see the cities working together to streamline the administration and enforcement of this payday lending ordinance. Aye.
Sten?
I want to, again, thank Commissioner Saltzman for getting this going. Good work.
Potter?
Aye. Okay, returning to our 801. No, that's, we already, no, it is 801. Item 801, please.
801. Authorize contract with Scott Edwards Architecture, LLP, and provide for payment for tenant improvements of warehouse for Police Bureau evidence storage.
Anybody from staff here? Gary, could you call our office? We'll skip over this, but we do need to have someone from the Police Bureau here to discuss this issue. It's a, it's a ordinance, it's item 801, so please have someone here. Let's move on to item 802. Are you here to speak on behalf of this?
I'm the project manager for OANET.
Okay. Yes, please come forward. This is for 801. Did you read that?
I did.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Steve McKeller, project manager for OANET. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer if I can.
But just very briefly outline what this contract does.
The contract will allow Scott Edwards to continue work. They've already done a schematic design for us for Giles Lake improvements to the warehouse, currently owned by BES. And the improvements will allow the Police Bureau Evidence Storage Facility to move to Giles Lake and replace their current facility near Lincoln High School, which, as you may know, is, was never designed to provide for the program that they are functioning.
Thank you very much. This was also in the, this year's budget for the Police Bureau. And I think through the sale of the facility near Lincoln High School, they expect to recoup a good portion of the cost.
Correct. I think we have an appraisal of about $2 million coming from the sale.
Any questions for the staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a sign-up sheet for this?
I did not.
Is there any member of the community wishes, in this council here, wish to discuss this? Okay, this is a non-emergency and moves to a second reading. Please read item 802.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement and Task Order 1 with USDA Forest Service, Mount Hood National Forest, for cooperative frequency usage.
This is a second reading, vote only. Please call the roll.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Please read item 804.
I think we took care of that earlier.
You what?
We took care of that earlier.
Okay. Then-
Maybe we didn't, sorry.
803. I thought 803 we did.
We didn't, sorry. We, 804, we should read it. Authorize the purchase of smart meter receipts and related services for the Portland Office of Transportation and provide for payment.
Second reading, vote only. Please call the vote.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Please read the next item.
805. Extend term of Southern Pacific Pipelines, Inc., franchise.
Second reading, vote only. Please call the roll.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Please read the next item.
806. Extend term of Olympic Pipeline Company franchise.
Please call the vote.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Please read the next item.
807. Extend term of Chevron Pipeline Company franchise.
Please call the vote.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Please read the next item.
808. Extend term of Chevron USA franchise.
Second reading, only. Please call the vote.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Mayor Potter, we had four items pulled off of the agenda that are emergency ordinances. That was 780 through 784. Sorry. I'm going to take those down before Commissioner Leonard leaves. We had a citizen request.
Okay, please come forward.
780. Authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Centennial School District 28J for financial support of certain activities and programs. 781. Authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the David Douglas School District Number 40 for financial support of certain activities and programs.
I want your testimony to be specific to this.
782. Authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Park Row School District 3 for financial support of certain activities and programs. 783. Authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Portland Public School District 1J for financial support of certain activities and programs. 784. Authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Reynolds School District 7 for financial support of certain activities and programs.
We have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Richard Koenig. We kind of touched on this when we were talking about the ordinance proposing the temporary tax for the school district. But I believe that with the concern that we have for the children of this community, that we have to seriously consider the implications of our schools not providing the education required by law. I think that if we, as a city, as a city government, condone that by continuing to sponsor the schools in their current lack of compliance, that, well, we're talking out of two sides of our face. I would hope that any agreement between the city and school districts is contingent upon compliance with the law. And I'm talking, for the record, specifically ORS 336.057, and let me give you the direct quote one more time. Public schools shall, not maybe, no discretion, shall provide a course in constitutional studies every year commencing no later than the eighth grade and continuing through college graduation. I think to do anything less than to make an intergovernmental agreement providing for funding contingent upon less than that is irresponsible. Thank you.
City Attorney, can we vote on these at once, or do we have to hear them individually? Okay, please read the first.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
782. Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
784. Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
784. Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
782. Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
784. Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Please read the last item, 809.
Assess property for sidewalk repair by the Bureau of Maintenance.
Is the city auditor here?
My name is Dan Brum. I'm a supervisor with the City of Portland Bureau of Maintenance.
My name's Sharon Simran, and I work in the auditor's office.
Please proceed. Could you please explain the, this non-emergency ordinance?
This is, let's see, what is it? Okay. This is just where we want to push, we recommend, there were no remonstrances on this, so we recommend that this be moved to the second reading.
I move it to second reading.
Can you hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
782. Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
784. Leonard?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Sten?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Please read the last item, 809.
Assess property for sidewalk repair by the Bureau of Maintenance.
Is the city auditor here?
My name is Dan Brum. I'm a supervisor with the City of Portland Bureau of Maintenance.
My name's Sharon Simran, and I work in the auditor's office.
Could you please explain the, this non-emergency ordinance?